All right, good morning, everyone. This is the Town Council Wednesday, May 6th. Regular monthly meeting.
This conference will now be recorded.
Yeah, now, ma'am, sorry.
Yes, sorry.
Good morning. This is the Town Council Wednesday, May 6th, 2020 Town Council Morning Meeting. We're all going to say the Pledge of Allegiance. Get out of the way, Carl. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, the Republic, the United Republic, the United States, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, justice, law. Again, I'm never going to get used to that, so that's not fun. Are there any other visitors on the call that would like to be recognized? Okay, at this point, we do have Kelly Edwards in her group here and Dave Malo. While we entertain a motion to move to number seven up to now, so that we can get them to speak and let us know what they're here for, and then that way we can move on with the rest of the agenda after that. So they're not hanging around. So can I get a motion for that?
Coming in off a marble, Chris.
Yeah, I have a real problem here understanding what you're saying. Try something again, Chris.
I was looking for the motion to move item number seven, which is Kelly Edwards, Dave Malo, and their group to move in the order so that we don't have to have them hanging around while we do all of the business.
I'll make that motion.
Okay, a second.
Yeah, Chris, it's really hard to understand what you're saying.
Yeah, I can hear you perfectly, Carol, and I can hear Eric, but cannot hear Chris.
Yeah, well, Chris is looking for a motion to move item numbers up the agenda to now, and I made the motion. He's waiting for a second.
I will second that motion.
Hello, Sarah.
Hi.
Hi. Hi.
Eric still here? Is he losing touch?
And that was Mark Richards saying aye.
I thought Eric was on before. Aye. Let's start this again, I guess. Alright, so I spoke to Kelly a while back when she took the issue of number seven.
Mary, could you do a picture or something like that to get him in clear?
Can I make a suggestion?
Everybody.
Everyone needs to be on mute if they possibly can. Even the phones should be able to mute and you can still listen. That should help with the echo.
Okay.
Are we good now? All right. And so number seven was the substance abuse youth survey. I spoke to Kelly a while back, and we went through the pipeline that she's had, and she was interested in coming before the council to kind of go through this survey that they've done to give us some more information on really what is going on in the schools. Then having the council as we move forward get more info and in this process to see what we may be able to provide to them as a town and to help some of the stuff that they're going through. And so at this point, I just opened up Kelly and Dave, and I guess there's two students on, which I'd like to take care of them as well. And to come in and show up to this great meeting that nobody can hear. And then at that point, we can probably go through this as a council down the road and then talk further about it. So I would do that.
All right, thank you very much. Um. Let's see, so there was a presentation that was emailed along with the agenda that if you could pull up on your screen or if you happened to print it out, if you could follow along, it would make everything probably a little more clear for you as we go. So I'm Kelly Edwards and I'm the Prevention Coordinator for the town. I am happy to have my co-prevention coordinator Shelby Mehmet, who graduated from Morgan and was very involved with prevention before she went to college. And now she's back as an employee and a college grad, so we're happy about that. I have two students from Morgan, Bianca and Anna, that will be adding feedback and content to this. And then, of course, our almighty director David is here also. So if we move to the first slide, I wasn't sure. On the first slide, thank you. I wasn't sure if everyone really knew what exactly Partners in Community does for the town. Partners in Community is 100% grant funded right now, and we are a coalition that is made up of all 12 community sectors. So you can read there what the government defines as the community sector. So we have reps from all of them that come to our meetings and give input. For the last 10 years, we've been funded by either a state grant or a federal grant, or this year we happen to have both, which has been lovely. And then to make decisions, it's not just like somebody has a great idea and we go with it. We actually use a public health model called the Strategic Prevention Framework, which is, was put out by SAMSA, the Substance Abuse and Mental Health Service Association. So we identify, have identified the needs in the community by doing surveys like we're going to present to you now. We've identified and know very well what our risk and protective factors are for substance use and mental illness in town, and we've developed a strategic plan that uses evidence-based strategies, not just really creative ideas to address the issues, and we evaluate everything from process to content to outcomes with everything that we do. So it's a pretty, we follow the model exactly, and I'm happy to say the good news overall is that it's working. And I'm going to have Shelby go ahead with the next screen, which has the yellow.
Hi, everyone. So now I'm just going to highlight a few of our achievements since 2010. Right now, we currently have a $1,430,000 grant for five years until 2024. We were also the national finalist for the GOT Outcomes award for Community Anti-Drug Coalitions of America organization. And we also have we were awarded the Youth Group of the Year by Connecticut Association of Prevention Professionals in 2019. We also have been awarded Youth of the Year by the Middlesex County Substance Abuse Action Council in 2014 and 2015. We've also won Program of the Year in 2014 as well from MICSAC. And students have also received citations for their contributors for the state and US government in 2018 and 2015. In 2019, we received the Volunteer of the Year Award and also Parent of the Year Award.
So what Shelby won't tell you is that she was the recipient of one of those Youth of the Year awards from MICSAC and contributed to the Program of the Year. So we have superstar amongst us here. Okay, on the next slide, we included a snapshot of some of the strategies that we have implemented over the last 10 years. One of our biggest and most populated strategies is React, which is our drug-free youth group, which focuses on developing assets and strengths and leadership for youth. Right now, we run React for grades five through 12, and this is for any Clinton resident at all. They don't have to attend Morgan. So we can have Vinyl or Mercy or Xavier students too. We roughly have about 145 members each year between all of those grades. So that's a, that's a good percentage of our young people are taking part in this. Annually, we also support a police youth group, which is currently working with 20 to 25 kids a year. And those kids are targeted kids that need good, you know, a good relationship, and then other kids that just have interest in policing. We've also seen, and you may have seen this, educational campaigns like billboards, posters, flyers. We had shopping bags a few years ago. We do the medication take backs with the police. We also support enforcement events with them, like sobriety checkpoints. We sponsor community and school speakers. We've done a lot of opioid education, and we had trainings on how to administer Narcan to address the opioid epidemic. And then, of course, as we're about to present, we've collected data every other year since 2005. So we really have been following along with what the trends are with our students for 15 years. And as I said, when we started, overall, the news is positive. And I'm going to go ahead, Shelby, again.
Okay, so now we're going to start taking a closer look at our data. So for these surveys in general, we had great responses. A lot of usable surveys this year and probably more than we've had in the past. So if you look at the first row, those are the number of surveys that were taken for Elliot Morgan, Elliot and Morgan, and the totals in the last column, and then the number of students who were enrolled at the time of the survey. Give you a few seconds to look that over.
Students may not have taken the test or the, I'm sorry, the survey because they might have been absent. We had very few parents that opted to not have their child respond, and that was, you know, an option for all families prior to. All right, we ready? So I'm now going to turn it over. If you flip to the first slide that says alcohol use overall, I'm going to ask Anna, who's a junior at Morgan, to go ahead and present this to you.
All right. So if you're on the alcohol overuse, like the use overall, you could see that in 10th and 11th and 12th grades, you could see that the youths have gone down. And it's, that's a good percentage. And you can see how like over the years, they get more knowledge about what alcohol can do to you between like health classes and clubs in Morgan, like React. But in 7th, 8th, and 9th, you could see how they have increased over the years. If you move on to the light. About alcohol perception of harm. So there's a decrease of like people thinking it's harmful for you between the 7th through 11th grade. But we have an increase in 12th grade, again, with like knowledge over the course of their years at Morgan. Um. So opportunities here for React and like health classes along with parents, and they have to like increase discussion about what it can do to you and their own effects on the brain. Um. We should try to like raise those numbers. It has increased. Um. Was it 2014 of darker room, but has decreased a lot since then. So for peer disapproval, again, has also decreased in the younger grades, but increased in the higher ones. So a lot of kids look at this as if they do disapprove, they'll lose their friendships, they'll look uncool. And it can have a big impact on them. So they rather say, okay, it's okay to do this because I want to be your friend still. For alcohol more info, this is about the parent disapproval. And it's pretty high overall, but again, 7th, 9th, and 10th could use some help. So the younger students don't think that their parents care if they use any substances, especially alcohol. And that can be leading them to a very dangerous path because if your parents don't, if you think your parents don't care or won't have effect on it, then you're going to have more of a chance of using. So an impact in like the data and like more teens using is parents think it's okay for them to drink as long as they're staying inside one house, keys are taken away, or like if it's just like the siblings and the parents because they want them to have an experience before they go off to college and know how to handle it.
So Anna, great, great job. I wanted just to say, one of the things that we've discovered by having the parents involved in the Elliot React programs is that parents don't really know when it's appropriate to talk to their kids. And so they hold off thinking, oh, well, I'll just wait until high school when, you know, they're in the midst of it. And we know just by living it and by all of the research that we really need to be talking to kids about alcohol by like third or fourth grade. And as Anna was saying, if younger students, if parents aren't talking about it, then how do kids know what their parents think? So one of the things that we've really focused on is a lot of parent education. And our data lets us see that a good percentage of Clinton gets it parent-wise, but there is still work to do. And then our youth have let us know that yes, parents are still hosting parties, you know, despite the laws against that because they just feel like, well, I'd rather them do it in my home than, you know, out in the woods or something like that and then be driving. So that is a reality here in Clinton that we've been working with since I got here in 2010. So it's something that we have to address every year. And I wondered, before we move on to our next substance, if there were any questions that anybody had about alcohol or any comments that anybody wanted to make? Okay, all right, Anna, you want to go ahead with marijuana?
Okay. So if we're back on like the chart for 8th, 10th, 11th, and 12th, we have seen a decrease in use. Um, more than like half. But in 7th and 9th, we saw a slight increase, which still should worry about and should take action to like try to prevent that. For the use. So overall, the grades have fallen. Um, 58 students report using marijuana at a friend's house, then 37 at their own house. Um, 18 students admit using it at school, 15 used it on their way to school. So that's like either like on the bus or like with a friend in the car driving them. Um, 44 students reported that they have vaped marijuana.
Right, and that's just quickly, that is of major concern because, as you remember, prior to the epidemic that we've got here with COVID, they were having a lot of lung failure and even young people with young failure. And what they were tying that to by and large was the fact that they had vaped marijuana and the THC as they vape it, as opposed to smoking it, was causing severe damage to the lung tissue, which was irreversible, which is why we were ending up with young people needing lung transplants. So the fact that we have 44 students in town admitting to doing that, and I can subjectively say, and if Spencer Mangz were on the call, he would confirm that we have caught students at Morgan with this THC, what they call them dad pens, or they've had them in their backpacks and things like that. So this is definitely a concern for us here in Clinton. All right, Anna, you're up.
Okay, so for perception of harm, it has fallen throughout all grades since 2014. So the decrease of like perception of harm, it can lead them to increase of use. So there's a lack of knowledge, like there isn't much going around in the school about like the harms of it. Everyone thinks it's okay to use because some is used for, um. Like you can get like the green cards. So everybody's like, oh, if it's being legalized in states, then it should be okay to use. In reality, it's not. Um. So again, like it isn't surprising since CT is like pushing to make it legal and everything. So again, like with React and like health classes and talks with like parents talk with their children about like even though the state and the world is thinking, oh, it's okay to use and all these benefits, there are side effects, there are like things that can go wrong, like it is not okay. For peer disapproval, um, has fallen throughout 7th, 8th, and 9th, but a good factor is it is increased in the 10th, 11th, and 12th grade. Um. So again, as numbers have fallen, it can use, it can be more affecting like using and damage to students. Again, how like if students say that they don't use or that they don't approve, again, they might lose their friendships. They might be outcast, no one wants to be that. So a big overall view about peer disapproval is definitely that no one wants to say no because they care about being popular, like their friend groups more than keeping themselves safe. And over half, 66.2% of all students access marijuana from either their friends or family who share it with them.
One of the things that we've been talking about a lot at React in the last 10 years is trying to break down the very stubborn culture amongst the kids at Morgan of kind of like, well, you do you. Now, you do you can be great because there's not necessarily like young people pressuring each other to smoke this, smoke this, smoke this. But there's also not the positive pressure of, well, why are you doing that? You know, if you're on my football team and I'm watching you either vape or use marijuana or something before practice, the kids aren't speaking up to each other and saying, you know, that's really bad for you and the team. Or, you know, if you're my friend and saying like, why are you, you know, no one's really putting up that that positive pressure at this point. React has worked hard in the beginning of this year. I don't know why my computer just shuts that off. Um. React was working on that positive peer pressure. We were hoping to do a couple of campaigns this spring that involved some of that, but COVID took over that. So any questions about marijuana or the perception of harm or anything like that? All right, Anna, great job. Thank you very much. We're going to move on to the 14th slide, which is kind of pink in color. And Bianca, who is also a junior at Morgan, she's going to share this.
Good morning, everybody. So I'm going to start off by talking about prescription drug use. So one of the big things that people think is that since a lot of these numbers are kind of lower on the slides of the students that use, they're in like the four or five percentage area, that's still not low because even if that's only 5% of the grade, that's still five students, which is way more than it should be. So the next slide is the perception of harm. So thankfully, as the grades are increasing, the perception of harm is increasing, but that really should be in the high 90s. It's still way too low. But it does lead us to believe that the younger students don't really know about the dangers until they get older and they've heard about about it because a lot of younger students might not even know what like a prescription drug is. They could think that it's their aspirin that they're taking. Um, but yeah, senior class is the highest, which is good because they're heading off to college next. So for the peer disapproval, the perception of harm does increase, but the peer disapproval decreases. So you can see almost all of like the 7th and 8th graders that appear to approve. But then as they jump from middle school to high school, that decreases by about 10%. And so that kind of makes us think that the use might increase if they think that their peers are okay with it or think that that's all right. So we need to educate them on the actual dangers of that as they start in high school. Any questions on prescription drugs? Okay, so next we're going to do vaping. So anecdotally, students believe that these numbers are way underreported. At one of our pick meetings, we had many, many students share their opinions that the numbers are probably close to one in two students even in some of the grades. Um, you can see like ninth grade, it's like 15%, then 10th grade goes up to 20.3, and then 11th, 23.1, and then 12th grade, it's one in every four seniors is vaping. Or at least within the last 30 days. Um, then perception of harm for vaping, it's alarmingly low. You can see only about half of like the 9th, 10th, 12th graders see that vaping is harmful towards you. So education is key for that. Oftentimes, students might not know what's in the vape. You can see in some of the later slides that they say that they might not even know what they're vaping, or some think that vaping marijuana is better because marijuana helps and cures some people, or some people think that vaping different things, or they really don't know what's in it. So we'll see that in some later slides. So now we're moving on to the parent and peer disapprovals for vaping. So the parent disapprovals are decent numbers. They're all in like the 90s and stuff, which is good. But we really need to increase the peer disapproval. So many of the students have expressed that they don't agree with vaping, but they don't want to lose their friends, therefore they don't speak up about their dislike to vaping. I know a few people personally who said that they told their friends they don't want to be there when they do it, but they don't really care if they do it. Um. So I think that someone saying that they don't disagree with it makes their friends think that they're all right with it. So now we're doing vaping broken down by what's in the vape. So nine students that reported vaping said they didn't even know what's in their vape, which is extremely dangerous. That's how children get very hurt. Um, you can see all over the world that people using any sort of drug that they don't know what's in it often leads to even death sometimes. Um, so that's really alarming. We also need to focus on educating at all levels within the community, at school, and at home because, um. Sorry, my thing glitched up. Um, but yeah, the numbers here are also lower than a lot of students believe they are. This is saying that only 85 students vape flavored liquids, 22 students vape flavored liquids without nicotine. Oh, 85 with, 22 without, 44 THC or marijuana, and nine students don't know. That's through all the grades. Um.
And can I just add in there that research has found that even when the flavored liquid is labeled nicotine-free, it's not. All of the flavored liquids at this point through testing have been found to have at least some small percentage of nicotine. So every student that is using a vape is potentially going to become addicted to it, even if they're trying to be nicotine-free. Sorry, B, go ahead. Good job.
Thank you. Um, okay, so some of the locations are their own home, including receiving the vapes from families and stuff, friends' home, getting it from friends or friends' parents. And open spaces are really frequent. A lot of students aren't really ashamed by it, and you can see them anywhere in public, including the public in school bathrooms, which is something that the students including the public in school bathrooms, which is something that the students extremely hate, but they think that their peers don't really mind. Um, so we need to address that. But twenty-six students say they vape on their way to school. Thirty-seven report vaping at school, which we also believe to be extremely low. Um, we think it's much higher than reported. And then twenty-two students say they vape at school events. Um, so yeah, many students have expressed their disgust in having their s- uh, their peers vape in and around the school, especially in the bathrooms. And the school has attempted to take measures, but I don't think that's worked at least enough. Maybe it's stopped a few people from vaping, but then they just go back and get a new vape. Um, so they're mostly accessing the vapes online or friends and family who are of age, whether they're college students, seniors, or even sometimes parents or adult friends. Um, or sometimes even by themselves, because some of the local gas stations like Sunoco and Shell don't even ask to ID these students, which is um something we're gonna try and do. We're gonna do um compliance checks at some of these, hopefully in the coming years. Off to David, I think.
Yeah, good job, Bianca. Um, does anybody have any comments or discussion? Um, I know vaping is a hot topic and there's varying levels of understanding about it. Um, I, I think one of the things that Bianca talked about, the access, is enormous here in town. The kids know where to go to get it, no matter how old they are. I literally watched a fifteen-year-old that I knew well buy it, uh, two people in front of me, they didn't see me. And I said to the, the ca- the cashier, you know, how come you didn't ID? Oh, we, we don't ID for that. It's not alcohol, you know, like it's not a big deal. So um, I think generally in our society, there's not enough information on vaping. And that's something else that Partners in Community will be doing in the next four years is really getting that information out there. Um, I think everyone believes it to be safer than smoking and a, and a good alternative. But um especially for the young people with the undeveloped brains, it's particularly harmful. Um, so any questions?
Kelly, yes, very quickly, uh, Eric here. What do we do to, hi, how you doing? What can we do to encourage these vendors not to have these vapes placed in such areas where it almost blends in with the candy and the colorful type of uh products that kids usually go for? Because I think they need to hear from us that we don't appreciate this type of salesmanship.
You're absolutely right, Eric, and that's one of um the environmental strategies that we will look toward. Uh, it was great when the flavored liquids were banned. Um, however, as you said, the placement or product placement in the, the gas stations and such is very obvious, and it's very um child-friendly, it's brightly colored and, you know, looks, it looks like candy. So that's something that Partners in Community can address. And we have a phenomenal team of our students that uh we could go out and we can set up appointments to speak with the managers of these um establishments and, and just show them what the impact really can be, um, share with them some research. And then ultimately, i- it is their final decision. But hopefully, by asking them to be um, you know, responsible community members and responsible business owners. I think uh potentially this, the um, the Business Association might actually be a, a good um resource to tap as well.
Great, thank you, Kelly.
Yeah, thank you for asking that. All right, if any other comments or questions? All right, I'm gonna have um David talk to you guys about the next slide, which is number twenty-two. Um, where we, whenever I've done this presentation, I've been asked, well, yeah, but you know, what's going on around us? And are we the worst or, you know, where are we in comparison? So um, I, there, on the presentation you have, um, there may be some blackouts. Um, so as David goes along, there might be some places where I can fill in a little bit more data that we were able to access. So you got it, David.
Thank you. Actually, Kelly, I'm gonna need you to help out a lot because my screen is totally black to uh allow me to keep an audio connection.
I see, okay.
Shut itself down, so I see nothing.
Okay. What would be most helpful for you, David?
Well, let me, let me start with saying a comment that I wanna make. And um, this isn't only about the percentage of kids who are gonna have lifelong problems with alcohol and drugs. Um, it's, it's about the fact that the number of people who have those lifelong problems increases the younger a kid starts. It's about a kid wrapped around, wrapping their car around a tree, it's about overdoses. Um, it's about kids who leave high school okay, but then age into harder drugs. And you see a lot of young adults with opioid use, uh, which we don't see um much or any of at the high school. Um, and it's sometimes about kids getting so lost in their use that they become hopeless and sometimes suicidal. So I, I think when I look at this, the biggest thing for me in this effort is about potential. We don't want kids to be losing their potential, um, and if we can get to them, we can help that. Um, as far as the chart, the only thing I re- I have from memory is I know we're doing significantly better than Madison.
Hooray! Do I hear the cheering crowds? Um, so Madison is where David used to work. I just want to throw that out there. Um, so on the chart, um, and again, my apologies if you've got a couple of blacked out areas. If, if we look at alcohol use from seventh through twelfth grade, which is typically the snapshot that people survey, is that middle and high school years. Clinton falls at eighteen point five percent of our students report using. I didn't get that information from Madison, but the state of Connecticut is eleven point four, and the USA is nine point two. So for alcohol use across all those grades, we are a bit higher. That is not a surprise to me, but we have significantly dropped that number. When I got here or in two thousand and ten, um, we had like sixty-five percent of the senior class reporting drinking. And yeah, Chris, I saw your face, that was a real number. And um, you know, now I can't remember the exact number, I could flip back to it, but I think it was in the twenties. So we're, we're definitely moving in the direction we want to move in. Uh, for marijuana use for those same grades, Clinton comes in at eleven point six. State of Connecticut is six point seven. And the US is twenty point four. So we're lower than the national, but we're higher than the state. In Madison, I don't have that. For prescription drug use, we're at two point five, Madison was three point four. The state of Connecticut was ten point one, and across the US, fourteen percent. So I'm happy to report that our students are avoiding abusing prescription drugs for the most part. But as Bianca said, even one kid misusing a Percocet or, or something is, is terrible news. Okay, for vaping, this is just for the high school years. Um, for the high schoolers in Clinton, it was twenty point five, Madison came in at twenty-four. State of Connecticut, twelve, which surprises me, and USA, twenty-seven point five. So one in five students in Clinton, one in four in Madison, um, and a little bit more than one, or almost one in three for the US. So we're about where the surroundings uh towns are. Um, I know Hadam Killingworth looked at this, and I think they had twenty-six, if I remember correctly. For alcohol for high school only, we come in twenty-four, Madison thirty-four, State of Connecticut thirty, and USA twenty-nine. So that, that number for just our high schoolers is looking better and better. And then finally, ma- uh marijuana for just high school, Clinton is sixteen point two. Madison was twenty-one, State of Connecticut, twenty point four, and across the US, nineteen point eight. So that's good, we're a little bit lower. So as you can see, you know, no reason to panic or fear. Clinton is not outstanding um or looking, you know, horrible. The, what I know anecdotally from the towns of Guilford, Old Saybrook, and um Hadam Killingworth, their numbers are roughly here too. Because as we know, alcohol use doesn't just stop at a town border. Kids share, kids know where to buy, and um they cross the borders and they party together. All right, any, any comments or questions on that? Okay, we have just a couple more slides, and thank you, everybody, for um, for listening in on this because it's really important with our youth. Um, and, and I'm gonna encourage Anna and Bianca while we're talking about mental health. If there's anything you want to add, please speak up, okay? Uh, so mental health is obviously, as we know, really tied to substance use. And um, I'm sure all of you are well aware that um the loss of a student this fall was um really traumatic. Um, I, I think across the town. So um, when we did, we actually did the survey right before we lost Gavin, and I'm gonna say his name because I think it's important to do so. Uh, we actually, three weeks prior to Gavin's death, um, we took this survey. So this is a snapshot of how they were doing prior to a major trauma. There was a written part of the um survey where I would say, what, Shelby, maybe twenty-five to thirty kids wrote in, why aren't we asking more questions about mental health? They really wanted to talk about it, and this is prior to their loss. Um, so a- as you can see on the chart, I'll, I'll refer to that for a second. Um, the numbers of, of kids saying that they were sad or depressed all or most of the time in the last thirty days is rising, except for ninth and tenth graders. Um, alarmingly so, the, the numbers for the seniors were, was very upsetting to me. Um, the seniors, thirty percent of the females were reporting feeling sad or depressed, while eighteen point six of the males. So um, you know, we, we definitely know that, that there's, there's an issue out there, we know the demographic of it. Uh, we have done a lot of training on um suicide and how to talk about feelings and how to identify a friend um or a student that is having trouble identifying resources. So even though we've had all of that training, um, this is still what the kids are, are reporting. Uh, the next slide, number twenty-four. Um, the, after, after Gavin passed away, um, there, there were a lot of mental health services offered. Um, and, and I think the response of the school and the community was absolutely as, as strong as it could be. Um, I don't think there was any lacking in response at all. Um, I just think it was a major trauma, and humans have a hard time with that. Um, even students who, who weren't very close to Gavin, you know, they weren't in his immediate friend group, people who just knew of him, were also remarking that it had kind of tripped up any trauma that they had already been experiencing or a loss that they had. You know, it wa- it was a, a whole community of grief, um, and, and was really hard. You know, their own personal traumas were, were activated. So um, in the community as well as in the school, we've heard about referrals for counseling increased. They increased at our department, they increased at um the community health uh therapist that works at Morgan. Um, our local private therapist also talked about increases in referrals and dramatically increased for anxiety and depression. Um, coming to present day, uh, the impact of this pandemic and the loss of school and rites of passage and such, you know, anecdotally, we're hearing a lot from our students um about how hard this is and the losses and the anxiety about being ill or um, you know, potentially family members being sick. Um, so we're looking, actually, right now, we're putting the final touches on a student survey um, on the impact of COVID, so that we will get a glimpse of where we are. Because I think when we did the survey, we were in one place, we lost Gavin, we were in another place. And now with a pandemic, we're in a whole third category of mental health. Um, and within that, we're also gonna be looking at um substance use and has it changed, you know, with potentially decreased access because kids are at home? Or is it increasing due to their um desire to ease their mental struggles? So um, any comments, Bianca, Anna, Shelby, David, or anyone, any comments or questions?
Yeah, Kelly?
Yeah.
Kelly, Eric again, I just quickly, have, have you done any studies? Because I did read in the Harvard News, I think back in February, a study done by the United Way where ten percent of our families, second highest poverty rate in middle-sized counties, uh, ten percent of our, our families are reliant, twenty-five, twenty-four percent live at this altitude level, which is also very low socioeconomic status. How, how, have these studies been done based on um, on the economics? And I'd even be interested on, on gender. How do we, how do these numbers, alcohol and drug use break down by um, by gender and by economic status?
A really good question. Um, we, in this survey, we did not look at economic, socioeconomic status particularly. We, we do have um the gender results, and primarily across all of the grades, the females are having a harder time. Um, that's not surprising. On report, I think the actual thing is that, the, the actual reality is probably they're all doing equally, equally challenged, but the females are more likely to report it because that's what's, you know, more societally acceptable. That the um guys aren't supposed to feel that, so they may not report that. Um, we, you know, we certainly have, I've, I've heard from the police that we've had some increase in domestic situations involving um juvenile boys. And to me, that says that's their, their mental health acting out um, and, and the way that they're coping with it in a more aggressive or anger-filled kind of way, rather than depressed and, and crying or withdrawing like a female probably would do. Um, even since the um close of school, there's been several incidents that have been referred to the Juvenile Review Board, which again, to me, are showing me the way that the boys are handling their mental stress on this. Um, as far as um socioeconomic, we have not, we don't have hard data on that. Um, David may, may be familiar with something that I'm not. Um, we haven't asked that question through the, the students. But I do know just from um discussions with Partners in Community and having our pastors uh being part of the conversation, our pastors are seeing um or are hearing of, you know, more stress in the home, more um domestic violence, more um, they're, they're able to see more of the substance abuse because people aren't out and about and, and able to hide what they're doing. So um, you know, I think our problems are becoming more clear by, by the stay-at-home order. Um, just because people can't, can't go anywhere to hide it. So that's what the, the pastors are dealing with. So I think um, you know, people that are, one of the main sources of anxiety that the pastors have shared is the um lack of financial security right now is really setting off people's use, people's mental health issues. So I think we're right at the tip of um what's to come with mental health and substance abuse, especially among adults. And um, part of the survey that we are moving toward, I would like to include some of the adult, or the adult population as well to get some feedback on those exact um issues that you're talking about, Eric.
Well, thank you, Kelly. I wanna thank Shelby, Anna, Bianca, and Dave as well. Great, great time.
Thanks, Eric. So um, finally, David, uh, we, we just wanted to relate a little bit on the, on the last slide here um about our strategic plan. Oh, David, you can't see this slide, can you?
That's okay, I think I could handle this one uh
Okay.
memory. Um, the, basically, we have a plan to deal with kids, environmental, as parents, to bring these numbers. And because of people like Kelly, this has been getting uh low all the time. Uh, gotta thank Anna um, and Bianca because I cannot picture myself having the courage to stand up the way that they do in high school when the um, the pressures to conform can be so strong. So I greatly admire the over a hundred fifty kids in React do. Um, maybe not all of them are hardcore participants, but that's a lot of kids to have involved. We could, um, the good news is, um, as far as our, our needs, um, we're gonna keep following our plan and working to lower those numbers. And you'll see the numbers and you'll see how we're doing. As far as our needs, the good news is, we have no financial needs. Um, we're doing fine, we just Kelly, with some help from me. Won a competitive federal grant that I don't know any other municipality has in the state of Connecticut. I know no other municipality has in the state of Connecticut, particularly a smaller one. But we need your support. We we need you to back us up. We need you sometimes when. The wheels of progress get stuck and you can help us. For. So like you to think that four and a half years from now. It will be like, it may be, we need to fund, be asked some of this, and I would ask you to consider. At that point, have been about twenty years free, all on federal and state grants. And that has been wonderful, and it's great to save the town money. But this is important, and we might not always have a grant to turn to. Thank you so much for all of your time at this. I appreciate your ass here.
So one, before we we finish up. If if you're unfamiliar with some of the research that shows how cost-saving prevention actually can be. That last slide includes a link to a pretty comprehensive study that SAMSA did on the ways. That prevention saves and and what it saves on. And then we'd love to invite any and all town council members and, you know, Carl, if you're free. To come to our PIC meetings. We typically meet the fourth Monday of the month from seven to eight. With the pandemic, things have kind of flown all around and gotten confused. And the this month, the fourth Monday is Memorial Day, so we'll be picking another day for that. But I will keep Chris on our email list, and I can add anyone else who wants to be on it. We we typically keep the meeting straight to an hour. We may be online similar to this for at least the next month. But we'd love to have your voices and your experiences, and I know we've got. Years and years and years of experience amongst you all here in town. You may have grown up here and know far more than than any of the rest of us all together potentially. So history matters, so your perspective and and ideas are definitely encouraged to be part of our conversation. The last slide is how to get ahold of David or I directly. If you want Shelby, come through me, I'll get you to her, and same with the students. But again, thanks to all my compadres. Chris, thank you for for having us here and and giving us as much time as you did. We appreciate it.
Very welcome. So again, let's just thank Kelly and David and obviously Shelby and Bianca for all they do. You know, I'd gone to Kelly way back when because I felt it was very important that, you know. As a council that we get involved in this and get behind it because we know what it is. It's a small town. When when one struggles, everybody struggles here. And everybody would have to be working together and getting together and coming together as a community. In order to prevent some of these stuff from some of this stuff happening going forward. So obviously, we welcome the opportunity to stay involved with PIC. You know, I will make sure that we do have a representative at the upcoming meetings. So that at least we have some some bigger ideas on what we may be able to be able to do to prevent all this going forward. So again, thank you for all your time and energies and efforts. We all do appreciate it.
Great, thank you so much. We appreciate you letting us up ahead in the in the agenda too.
You don't want to listen to all this stuff, we gotta do so.
All right, well, thanks again, everyone, and take good care.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Hi, thank you.
All right. So now we are going to jump right into the approval of the minutes from April fifteen, two thousand and twenty. So if there's a motion to approve those minutes.
Move.
A second?
A second.
Mark. Okay, all in favor of the approval of the minutes of the April fifteen, two thousand and twenty meeting?
Aye.
Are you opposed? Abstain? Great, thank you. I don't know as far as the appointments and resignations at this point, we don't have any that are on the board, so we move on. We did get one, I guess we should just address this, so we did get one application for an appointment to a board or commission. The individual lived in another town, worked here. We just want to be clear, clear going forward that obviously you have to be a resident of Clinton to. To be approved or be appointed to a board or commission in town. He said that he worked here, lived on a boat for a period of time. But unfortunately, obviously, resident of Clinton, you have to verify, ensure that you're a resident of Clinton to. To be appointed to these boards and commissions, so. Just wanted to make that, people aware of that. And number five is the Indian River Landing tax abatement. Before we go to the suggested motion, the tax abatement request form is here. Hopefully, everybody read through that, along with the proposed real estate incentive tax agreement. At this point, there's a motion before we can go into any discussions, is there a motion? The town council concurs with the findings and recommendations of the Economic Commission to approve a property tax abatement. For Indian River Landing as described in the commission. The town council hereby authorizes and directs the town manager to prepare a tax abatement agreement. And the terms and conditions of the abatement.
I'll make a motion.
Is that Christine, a second? Anyone on a second for the motion to approve? Okay, at this point, I guess we should just open it up for discussion before we go any further.
Well, Chris, this is Mark Richards. I sent a letter out or an email out two week ago. And, you know, I kind of outlined my concerns. I don't think it's good policy. They are retailers, not a manufacturer, not a distribution. They have to be in Clinton. There is no need to give a, any kind of tax concession or abatement to have them move here. Especially in light of what's going on right now with our other existing stores in town, who are under pressure. Under restaurants, under pressure. I just, and and our tax base under pressure, I don't think it's good policy, and that's why I'm against granting the abatement.
And this is Carol. I I thought that Mark's argument was well-founded. And I see that there are numerous entities in town that are investing huge amounts of money. In their facilities, particularly Shoprite is doing a multi-multi-million dollar upgrade on their store. And right now, across the street, Clinton Crossing is obviously suffering greatly. I think there are a lot of reasons to at least. Hold off on this until things are more stable all the way around. Again, I think there could be backlash from the existing community for us doing this. And I also want to remind town council again that the project has already received. I think it was a two-hundred-thousand-dollar tax abatement for what, or abatement for what they had to do. In terms of configuring their traffic situation. And last week, we absolved them of the land use fees that was about thirty thousand dollars. It's just, it's not that I'm totally against an abatement. I just would like to hold off till we see the the full repercussions of the situations we're living in now. To give away. Funds, money to something that doesn't exist when you have people that are are not sure if they can even reopen is a little. Difficult for me right now.
Okay, so. You know, I guess the the thing that I kind of need to just maybe just clarify for everybody, I mean, the the reason, you know, like, they don't have to come to Clinton. Braylock Properties does not have to come to Clinton. Absolutely right. The good part is, is they are coming to Clinton. They do want to build here, they do want to be a partner with the town, and they are putting a very large development, economically speaking, into our town. Okay, so that being said, we are trying to be the good neighbor and actually welcoming to the town. Obviously, there are startup costs with all new construction. I think we're losing sight of the fact that everybody's talking about the other developments in town. We're talking about Clinton Crossing, we're talking about Shoprite, we're talking about Stop and Shop. And why aren't they getting anything? But the reason they're not getting anything is because they're already established. They're established entities within the town. This is a new construction that's going into the town that is asking for those. At the time that they were putting in Shoprite, Stop and Shop, Clinton Crossing. If they asked for an abatement, obviously, they would have, it should have been entertained. Okay, so we can't really compare something that's to an established development to something that's new construction. An established development is not eligible for tax abatements. New construction is. So that's why they're doing it. I mean, you know, we're we're setting ourselves up for some potential issues here. When you've got new developers that are coming in and asking for things. You know, we're trying to be the good neighbor because we want to welcome them here. I mean, you know, we're gonna have a meeting tonight where people are concerned about a budget. Well, the only way to help our budget and to help our bottom line is to engage in new development in our town. And we need to be welcoming to that, obviously, new construction and those abatements, because it does benefit the town. Ultimately, this will benefit the town. Are there things up front that we're gonna have to pull back on, that we won't be making? Yes, at the end of the day, we're selling the property, we're making cash on the property, and it's coming out of our tax base. We're gonna be generating tax revenue down the road. You know, I I I struggle to see why there would be an issue as far as the other, the fees with land use. We didn't give anything away. We weren't going to be allowed to make any fees down there. I mean, that's by line, by line, there wasn't anything that we gave them on land use fees. There's certain fees that we can collect, that's it. We don't have a choice in the matter. And yes, was there another abatement that was that was out there down the road and some other monies that they received? Yes. Again, to me, you know, I think we're looking at something where, you know, it's the it's the good neighbor clause. You know, we want to be a good neighbor, we want to be a good partner with new developers that come in. You know, if we start, you know, backing away on this, and I understand we're in a very difficult time, a very difficult situation, but this for everybody. But this is a huge development for our town that's gonna generate a lot of revenue for our town going forward. This isn't about us today, tomorrow, down the road. This is about twenty years down the road. So.
Trish, Trish, I'm sorry.
Mr. Chair. Yes, good, Christine.
Sorry, I'm cutting anybody off. Is it okay if I speak now?
Yep.
All right, thank you very much. I want to point out that this developer has already invested in Clinton. They did purchase the Stop and Shop parking, or Stop and Shop Plaza, and they have already been to the land use. To make their proposal for significant investment to that development and upgrades. They're very committed to the city. They're not a developer who's going to come in, develop, make their money, and leave. The other concern I have is is not offering up this type of abatement that. We have an Economic Development Commission that has worked very hard on coming up with a policy. Which would be unilaterally used for any development coming in. And we're we're sort of going against what they're making a proposal on and reporting. And the other side of it as well is that you have a developer who is going to make a significant investment. We're not asking to reduce their taxes on a property that currently has no taxes because it's it's a town-owned property. So we're not at, there's no taxes. There's, everything's gonna be an add-on benefit towards the town as they move forward. They demolish the building, they have land value, they've got pay tax on land value. Construction takes place. I'd like to hear a little bit more from Carl, town manager, his views on this. Certainly, I know you negotiated this, and whether or not you think this is a good opportunity, both the developer and the tax board. Thank you.
Yeah, so the the developer has has an interest and identified a number of unique factors of what the property has to address. There was a prior abatement negotiated to respond to environmental issues on the property. The developer would forego that abatement, and it would be rolled into a new abatement structure that was moved by the EDC. The EDC does note that there is a certain amount of risk associated with developing detail, particularly now. And the abatement would help make sure that the project actually is a success. The concern is if the the deal collapses again, that the town is gonna have to absorb carrying costs from the property. Those carrying costs could include demolition, since the property is becoming an attractive nuisance the longer it sits there idle. Instead of having a higher, better use than what it is at present. So the EDC's arguments are well, well-reasoned, and speak to why why the abatement should be approved. It falls in line with the policy that was adopted by the then-morde selection last year. It seems to fit all of the bells and whistles that were asked for. The devil is in the details of negotiating the final document for the board to approve, for the council to approve. But it it's hard to see how this. It sends a message that Clinton is interested in economic development. We cannot help everybody who's pre-existing. I was informed yesterday that Simon Property is planning to reopen. So they're they're looking to move forward as Connecticut looks to reopen and put themselves back online. So they will be active later this month. As they try to get their feedback underneath that. You cannot provide abatements to existing businesses, it's only on the construction. And this is gonna be some of the most significant new construction in town since.
I appreciate that input.
Again, Mark Richards, if I may speak, Mr. Chairman. We're talking about negotiation. This is unneeded dollars being given by the town of Clinton for this development. It is gonna go forward because certain retailers want it to go forward, and they need to be in Clinton to get the dollars from the Clinton residents. Don't be dissuaded from the big issue is it's not needed by town to draw these people in. Braylock may say, they're just asking, and I would do the same thing if I was them. You can always ask for it, but it really is not needed. So from a negotiating position, it's unneeded by us to give this up, if you would, give an abatement. Away our money for something that's, they're gonna come here anyway. It's just, it does not seem to make any sense to me. There's no economic sense to it. I really don't think there's any economic sense, and it certainly does not look good to the existing retailers. And I mentioned that, you know, Shoprite, I mentioned the shop, the people that bought Shoprite are putting substantial dollars in there. The store itself, and getting no help from the town of Clinton. And how would it look that we bring another, a third supermarket in, and we subsidize them for the first five years of their existence? Because you know, when a new supermarket opens, everyone's gonna flock there anyhow because they want to go to the new store. They don't need it. They don't need this to be abatement. We're making a mistake here.
Mr. Chairman, Dennis here.
Yes, Dennis.
My 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 really concern about, I can, I can feel what Mark is saying to an extent. And of course, I do understand the long implications of what it's gonna mean to the town. My concern was, why are we waiting? Why are these percentages so long and drawn out that we have to wait so long to get our full? Money back? As far as taxation, in other words, what I'm trying to say in the short run is, I would have felt much better. If in twenty twenty-three, right, see there, we get twenty percent. I I, and then twenty twenty-four, forty percent, twenty twenty-five, sixty percent, twenty twenty-six, eighty percent. Twenty twenty-seven, finally, on the first phase, we get a hundred percent. I I would have felt a lot better if those percentages had been increased. In other words, I would have thought that twenty twenty-three, forty percent coming back to the town in taxes. And eighty percent in twenty twenty-four, and then a hundred percent by twenty twenty-five. I I don't understand why, I understand we're trying to get them in, we're trying to help them, but. this is really extending, the town doesn't get taxes really fully until, uh, on the first stage again. Uh, I don't have to repeat the numbers. It just seems like it's a long, drawn-out deal. And, uh, my second part to that is, how, when is this deal gonna go through? I guess is what I'm, we're not getting any taxes at all. And we don't get our first taxes until 2023. Uh, I'd like to see something, I know maybe Carl could jump me up real quick by saying it can't be done, but when, let's re-agree to this abatement. Can we make it, uh, sort of tied in that this deal has to be signed? We, we, we still own that property. I wanna see this property change hands, uh, to the builder, uh, and get, get, get this thing going. It seems like it's just so long, we're waiting and waiting. The townspeople, they keep asking me, when's that deal gonna go down? And so I'd like to at least get that tied in that if we do agree to this, that this, uh, agreement gets tied up within 90 to 120 days, at least, or something along the lines, maybe sooner if we can. It seems like we've been waiting a long, long time to, uh, realize this project go forward. Uh, and along with that, what happens to like, uh, if they were to get the deal, let's say by the end of this year and own it? Uh, we don't get any lease taxes on the money, I mean, on the land, I'm sorry, for, uh, 22 at least, just for the land part? I mean, we don't get any revenue back until 2023. That just, this puzzles me. Maybe Carl or someone could, uh, carry me up on that.
The land value will be taxed as soon as the property closes. So the, the land at a minimum goes into taxation once they've got control of the property. The abatement is on the improvement, so that would be any new construction. The land itself will be taxed and is taxed from year one in perpetuity.
Good, good. That, that, that's the first question. Thank you, Carl. I was, I was hoping at least we get something, get started and if you could, uh, sort of, uh, comment on my comment about the fact that if we did pass this abatement, could we, uh, sort of attach it in there that this agreement has to start? That they actually just buy it from us and give us money and let's get this over with?
Yeah, I'll have to confirm the specifics on that with John Bennett. Uh, normally, abatements have milestones in there for construction. So get that to the occupancy being here, we're gonna start period of time. Then you're gonna meet those milestones in a given period of time. Brings it back, in this case, to the town council to take a look at for whether the developer is moving along with multiple speed. Uh, so there, it's not unusual language and milestones built in there. The actual timing is a closing and I just have to confirm that with John.
Thank you. Thank you, sir.
Mr. Chair. As far as the developer himself, um, I guess last month would have been heading and zoning where they were finally approved for everything. And at the point that they were approved, um, myself and Erica at that meeting, I think Tim was there as well. They indicated that prior to all of this happening, obviously, with the pandemic and COVID, that they wanted to try to break ground by the end of the summer. So that's a comment that they made at a public meeting. So, yes, they do want to move forward and they, they finally have the approval, which is, is recently, uh, which was recently granted by Planning and Zoning Commission for the development to move forward. Um, you know, and again, to reiterate with Carl, as soon as they close on the property, we start going land, uh, land only free tax. Um, in addition to that, you know, uh, as a new development, any developer, you know, any developer that comes in now, it's gonna put in a very large project, is going to ask for a tax abatement. Whether we think they are gonna come or not, at the, at the end of the day, they haven't closed on the property yet. So the property has a case that they can sit down and say they're gonna come anyways. Maybe he knows anything. They work, when we close on the property, we still wanna be generating a large sum of money that the town will be generating for the sale of the property. That's, you know, I mean, the tax thing, again, you know, we keep going back to the other, the other developments in town. They're already established. They're not adding the tax abatements. The tax abatements are eligible for new construction in a town. Um, you know, I, I don't think we're giving them, you know, everything. I mean, yes, I mean, should we, you know, would we wanna generate more tax revenue from the beginning? What town wouldn't? But you also have to be open and, 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 you know, user friendly when they come in here so that we can work together with them. I mean, it's not like we're not gonna generate any, any tax revenue at all from the beginning. We will as soon as they close on the property. Yes, we're waiting five years. We're, we're not doing something either that's out of the ordinary from other towns that deal with, uh, developers that come into town and they're, and they're looking for new construction. This isn't something that, we're not giving some 10-year incentive plan here. And actually, to, to go back a little bit, and the EDC put a lot of work into this. Hank Teskey did a ton of work as it related to this tax abatement. Did a lot of homework and looked at a lot of other towns. I met with Hank, I had a meeting with him, I spoke to him. Um, you know, so, so he understands these abatements and he had a lot to say with this and, and he looked at other towns and what other towns are offering. Um, you know, so we are aligned with what other towns and what other communities are offering to new development, new developers. I understand Mark's point, you know, they're gonna come anyways. Well, I don't know if that's the attitude that we wanna present to developers going forward. I mean, we wanna be open to development because we need the development. We're, we're gonna go, like I said again, I'll reiterate it, we're gonna go to a budget meeting tonight where people are gonna be talking about, you know, dropping taxes, reducing taxes, zero tax. The only way that we do that is with new development. The only way that we do that is with these developers coming in and getting our own tax books and collecting revenue from them. Whether it might be, you know, not as much as we want from the beginning. At the end of the day, Clinton's not going away today, tomorrow, three years from now. This is a, a project that's gonna be here down the road, generating large quantities of tax revenue for the town of Clinton, just like Clinton Crossing is. And that's the way I look at it.
Mr. Chair, five minutes please.
Yeah, thank you. I, I also did speak with Hank Teskey and, uh, he's, he and the other members of the EDC put a ton of work into this and a ton of research. And while I agree with Mr. Richards' general premise that there does seem to be a sense of unfairness to the existing companies in town, uh, this is a well-researched business pool, that businesses in town to stay in town. And this developer has dealt with us on absolutely good faith the entire way, the application was solid. Everything they've done, I feel, in, in attending some of these planning and zoning meetings, has been absolutely on a level. So I think this is the bare minimum we can do. Should we renegotiate the deal? Oh, I don't know. I mean, it does end after five years, I believe. So I, I think everything that's been done with it is fair.
Hey, can I make a point here? I don't think we negotiated this deal at all. This is what they've asked for and we've acquiesced. So that's, you could, you could back, back up on that and say, did we negotiate with them or did they just ask for this and we're saying yes?
Well, is this something you would like to negotiate and redefine the terms with them? That would be something I'd, I'd be amenable to.
I would think, at, at the minimal, my goodness, you know, they're just throwing this up and say, let's see what we can ask for and let's see if they say yes. And we just said, sure. We never said, well, is this fair to the town of Clinton? And to Dennis's point, maybe we give them something the first year or two to help them, uh, pay for, you know, uh, outfitting the store with racks and whatnot. But the reason they're coming to Clinton, not for the abatements, is to capture the, that's why they, they bought, they build stores in every town, because they know that's what they have to make the investment into the town. The abatement program is primarily for, as I said before, distribution and manufacturing. They can go anywhere. How do we entice them to come here? It's a necessary evil. I hate doing it because we're just competing against our fellow towns. And what they call that is a race to the bottom. How low can we go? How many dollars can we cut out of our income side? Really, I really don't think this is good policy, folks. At the minimum, I would cut it back, at the minimum. Anyway, I, I don't wanna belabor the point.
We're not, we're not cutting anything. I mean, we're technically not cutting anything now because we don't have anything now. Right now, this is a town-owned property. Right now, we collect nothing. Right now, we're at zero. So we're, we're not cutting, we're, we're just basically, you know, enticing. And, and again, I don't think he just, I mean, I, I, I don't know. I, I'm not gonna say that a developer this size and for the amount of developments they've done around the state, uh, it just threw something against the wall. I mean, I, I don't think that that's really how they went about it. I think they looked at numbers. Um, I can tell you that we've looked at some other tax abatements from other developments, uh, that have gone out or that are trying to move forward in this town. And I can tell you, this is a lot more thought-through than the other ones were. Um, so to say that this was just thrown against the wall, I don't agree with that at all. I think they understand their numbers. I think they understand their startup costs. And I think they understand.
Yeah. I certainly didn't say they threw it against the wall. It's what they asked for. They're asking for as much as they can, which is understandable. I would do the same thing if I was in their position.
They can, they can ask for the first three years for nothing. We don't know what they can ask for because we don't know the dynamics of what they're doing. I mean, I mean, again, year two, we're collecting taxes. And from, from the moment that they close on the property, we're starting to collect 83 change, 83,000 and change. And year number two, we're, we're, we're starting to collect, okay, a lot of it pushed this out. A lot of, and everybody's talking about, is this gonna get done? Where's it gonna, listen, this is, you're right, a necessary evil of getting a project done, without a doubt. Okay? But at the end of the day, we keep delaying these things. They, they can delay closing because they wanna be comfortable in, in the, the economics of this bottom. Who's to say you're right? Who's to say you wanna know what Big Y says now all of a sudden, hey, we're out of here? We don't like the way things are working. We're telling them back. What do we have then? Absolutely nothing because we don't have a sold property. It is a necessary evil, but it's a necessary evil that's gonna benefit our town economically. Maybe not as quickly as everybody would like, but who's to say you're right? Market's retail, right? So let's say, hey, listen, Big Y says, you wanna know what? No, we're out of here now with the epidemic. I mean, we're playing with other things they can hang their hat on now. Plenty of other things. And if they pull out, then what do we have then at that point?
I don't think they're gonna back out.
You can't say that just like I can't say that.
Yep.
We can't, we can't say anything about what somebody else is gonna do. We can only be that person and that, that, that neighbor and that, you know, community involvement that says, hey, listen. And we're talking about this specific project, new construction, tax abatement. We, we get caught up a lot on these other things. They're established projects. They do not have the ability to ask for a tax abatement. Unless they've put a lot of money, unless the money property's sold, well, somebody who just bought the ShopRite for multi-millions dollars, they purchased it. What's that, what sort of tax abatement do they need? It isn't like they have any startup cost. They purchased it and spent millions and millions of dollars buying it. This is somebody who's developing something that's going to put millions and millions of dollars into our community. This is for the benefit of our community down the road. I'm not denying the fact and arguing the fact that nobody likes to do it. Okay, it's not a perfect situation. It's not something that we can, that we can pretty much everybody agree on. But the reality is, this is for the benefit of our community because it's gonna get a, a development out of our hands. The school's been sitting there for a long time, okay? We wanna sell the school. We wanna sell the property. And the necessary evil of a new development is somebody coming in and asking for something. You know, and I mean, I don't know. So you go back and say, you listen, can you go down to two years and pay 100%? I mean, you know, it, to me, it just seems like, you know, it's a process that we've kind of gone through. I mean, you know, he's gone through a big, huge development, a big, huge process with, you know, uh, with, with this development and, you know, planning and zoning is taking a long time just getting the thing off the ground. That's just my opinion. I, you know, I, I, I think we need to, we need to move forward with this property. I mean, it gets it off our tax base, puts it on somebody else's, uh, you know, lap. And we're going to collect money, whether it's the amount of money we want upfront and they're, and they're acceptable with the front. I, listen, great, it's not gonna be everything we're gonna collect. But down the road, there are gonna be things. If Big Y comes in, there's personal, personal property tax that we'll collect on Big Y and all their equipment. And anything else that may go in there. So I just, you know, I have a difficult time, you know, kind of, you know, sitting back and just, you know, saying, you know, finding a fight that right now we're collecting absolutely nothing. And I can't say, nobody can say that they'll leave or they're not gonna go. I don't know. In addition, we're collecting our 2.2 million when the property closes. So there, there are some benefits to the town on that side. Because right now, we're collecting nothing. We're not gonna collect the sales price. We're gonna collect some tax revenue. Not everything everybody wants, but the development that we can start saying, let's go. So. At this, at this point, you know, again, at this point, there's a motion, um, there was a second, I guess, to the motion that was made.
I just wanna say, this is Carol, I just wanna say that I think there are wonderful arguments
Hello.
for each side. But my, what I'm thinking primarily at this moment is if we don't provide incentives this way to these developers, who's gonna come back if they do walk away? No one. If they see that we are not willing to cooperate and help a project move forward to this level, then no one is ever gonna come to Clinton to look into this property again. Um, I do feel as though they could walk away. They have, um, made a substantial investment for sure. But when, if they were to op, um, balance gains versus losses, at this point, they would lose less if they walked away. Um, and Christine brought up a good point that they are vested in Clinton. They bought the Stop and Shop Plaza. Um, these are, and having sat at the selectmen's meeting when all the developers came forward and presented their options for the site, we would never get this type of offer again for that site. Everything else was multiple, multiple apartments or condos or something. This is the, was and the most desirable plan for there, and I do not wanna see that go away. So, um, I appreciate every argument that you have said, Mark, but I feel like if we were not to move forward at this point, excuse me, I have a two-year-old in the background here. Um, anyway, okay, I'm out. I will put this back on.
Mr., Mr. Chairman, can you, uh, hear me?
Yes, Tim, go ahead.
Okay, I, I can respect, uh, Mark's feelings about this. I understand where he's coming from. I'd like to use the analogy of a company that has been offering a starting salary for their employees for many, many years. And now they find themselves not competitive. And they're losing the opportunity of getting new, good employees. That company's going to have to go ahead and increase their starting salary. Now, is that fair to the people who have come in to the company? No. But they have to do it to be competitive. I think in today's, uh, environment, retail environment, if you wanna say, business climate is different. And even though we haven't had a tax abatement in this town ever, I don't think that necessarily means we should never have a tax abatement, whether it's retail, commercial, or whatever. So I personally feel like Carol does that I wanna see this to go through because the sale of the property would mean a lot to this town and future tax revenue would mean a lot to this town. So, uh, I, I, I feel that we have to move forward, uh, and I would be in favor of it.
Thank you, Tim.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
This is Dennis here. Move the motion.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor. This is our second.
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 Any other further discussion? Okay, at this point, all in favor of tax abating for Raylock Properties?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose?
Oppose, mate.
Stay. All right, so at this point, the tax abatement is approved and moving forward. Thank you, everyone. Okay. Next up on our agenda is the number six, which is the Condoc concession stand contract. Um, we couldn't have agreed in kind for.
Um, we, Clinton Harbor Grill came forth, uh, with some, um, comments and questions and concerns about the lease that they currently have, nothing relating to the amount of rent they pay. Um, as everybody can see on the concessions, they were just looking for some amendments to it for the change of hours of operation, um, which was number one. Uh, so through the RFP, there were no specifications, uh, the current lease terms were seven AM to seven PM. They were looking for amendment from eight AM to three PM, so they're just looking to serve breakfast and lunch service only. Um, then, open May first, uh, they requested May first, uh, I spoke with Carl and we agreed that, uh, May first was not going to happen. Um, so we gave them, uh, a temporary start date of May twentieth. Um, the RFP indicates, uh, the June first start date. Um, the current lease terms are twenty to twenty-one seasons, open May first through Columbus Day. Um, and as you can see, the comments from Carl. Right? Um, and then the other one is just to clarify the closing ties, please, uh, the vendor was to inform, the RFP was to inform town hall, getting the debt to be opened. And the current lease term's a quality for not being open unless excused. Um, so the process is not clear, uh, procedure should be adopted to clarify the rules responsibilities. Our, our opinion of, listen, if you watch the close, uh, due to weather, due to any other, you know, circumstances that you notify the town, and, and, you know, we move forward. Uh, the way the first refusal, um, the RFP doesn't specify to this. The current, the current lease terms are a three year term, silent on the process at the end of the term. Uh, Carl's going to have to review this because there's going to be language that, uh, we would have to put in there, not necessarily a right of first refusal in case the town wants to go a different direction at any point during leases on that building, since it's a town owned building. Um, so there's going to be some language that we're going to have to engage that maybe gives them the opportunity at a specific time before this lease term ends, that he's looking to continue to move forward, um, you know, with the, with the lease. Um, and then the last one was just still open, maybe in Columbus Day. And the RFP specified September twenty, two thousand and nineteen, uh, was, or the September twenty would be the end date. Um, and again, wanted to be open twenty to twenty-one, May first through Columbus Day. Uh, contract would be, have to be amended to, to a comedy. So those are the things that they've come forward with. Um, any discussions that anybody has on any of these? Um, comments that they would like to amend in the current contract?
Oh, this is Christine Gupiel, uh, I'd like a motion to move forward with those amendments to the contract and allow the town manager to negotiate further details as you've outlined.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Okay, any discussion on any of these? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Upstaying. Thank you very much. Okay, Liberty Green, number eight, no, Liberty Green Historic District Revised Ordinance. So we're on, I think it's number three now, that hopefully we have the final, uh, revised ordinance completed, taken care of. And at this point, everybody has coffee, we're looking to just, uh, motion to approve the revised ordinance and move it through a public hearing, public hearing, um, of a date to be determined at this point.
I move that motion, Mr. Chairman, Dennis here.
Thank you, Dennis, a second?
Second, Tim.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Upstaying. Okay. Chairman's report, um, so I'm going to quickly go through something that I probably don't want to have to talk about much going into the future. But as it relates to our appointments on boards and commissions or appointments that this council makes, um, you know, obviously, we know what happened recently and I'm not going to relive this and go through it all again. Um, I just would like to say that as a council and as a commission, we're here to represent the citizens of, of the town. We are not all going to agree all the time on the appointments that we may have. Okay, there's going to be times where there's appointments that are put before, that were, before us, that we're not all going to agree on. But we need to make sure that, that, that these appointments that we put forth, okay, are for the better, benefit of the town and nothing else. Okay? Because, you know, to sit here and have further lengthy discussions about appointments as it relates to not the qualifications of the individual, but about everything else, it, it is, it's, um, it's, it's difficult, let's, let's put it that way, okay? Um, I've said from the beginning, I'm here to move forward, I want everybody on this board to move forward. If we're going to continue to, you know, set, uh, an appointment to a board or commission and then, you know, have continued discussions of, of it with the public down the road, it's going to benefit nobody. Okay, because it looks badly on all of us, okay? So the fingers that are being pointed here, you know, pointed there, I just, I want it to stop, okay? We're going to act professional and if we, we're not all going to be, like I said, we are never going to maybe all agree all the time on the boards, on the appointments for these boards and commissions, but let's act professional and move forward, okay? If an appointment is made, let that individual do their job, so they either fail or they succeed, that's how it works. I mean, that's, that's how, and that's how we have to look at things going forward, okay? Because the finger pointing, everything else, I'm done, I, I, I'm not in, I'm involved in that and I don't like being involved in that and I don't feel that it would need to be part of this council. We have a good group of people that I feel we can work together, we just had an, you know, a, a discussion about a tax abatement. So at this point, listen, we're not all going to agree, okay? I, I was on planning and zoning for four years, I never voted on something because, because of my party affiliation. I voted because of the fact that what we need to do as a town to help our town move forward, that's it. So as we go forward, I hope everybody can realize that, so we don't have to have continued discussions after we make an appointment and, you know, to any board or commission, okay, because it benefits nobody. We need to work together as a council and keep it that way. Um, other than that, it's a couple of the things that are going on in town that I just want to make acknowledgement to. Uh, the Adopt a Senior, which was at Morgan High, um, I guess out on Facebook, they, they started this, this page to benefit the seniors in our town, uh, that probably aren't going to have a graduation. Um, and they put out this Adopt a Senior. Um, and I think it was a great thing to do, um, and acknowledge all the, all the children and the kids that were seniors this year that didn't really have the, the normal send off that they would have, so, um, kudos to them. Um, also recently, the Clinton First Responders were recognized on Channel Eight, um, for a birthday party for a nine year old. Um, and as everybody can see all over town, uh, we want to obviously thank all of those people, our first responders, policemen, fire departments, um, and all the people that get involved for some of these birthday parties for the younger children that, um, you know, gives them an opportunity to, to put a smile on their face during these crappy times for everybody. So thank you for all of that. Um, and the lastly, we posted on Facebook the other day, I think it was last week, the Clinton Fire Department, um, provided a message that the state of Connecticut, um, is going to provide surgical masks for businesses that are fifty people and under. Um, so there is a, uh, on the website, on the town website, it was listed on that, so on the Facebook page, uh, and on the town website, we've listed this, and then there's a list of, uh, businesses that might be available, uh, to receive those masks. Uh, I just want to make people aware of that as well. All right, and then we move on to the town manager's report. Not you? Considering the lateness of the day, uh, just to, quickly, you have my written report, uh, so the notable highlights there is the vetting process of a new town auditor. We hope to be able to bring that to you in time for your next meeting to point that firm to replace RSM. Who you'll recall, we're going to go forward with us this fiscal year, next fiscal year, but due to staffing issues, I think we have potential positives, uh, firms that will, will work with us as we go through, uh, reviewing their references. Uh, the other item that was somewhat lengthy in the report, that's a sore point, uh, there is, uh, the Old Morgan School site, a proposal to have a fish ladder installed. Uh, it's part of a park that would be deeded back to the town as part of the development. Dean is looking for somebody to be a project sponsor. There's really no exposure to the town other than some administrative time that I can do to handle the, the aspects of the grant that really are our responsibility. Um, there's somebody lined up to write the grants, uh, the expectation for the state is that the design will be funded. Um, a subsequent grant would have to be sworn against a mechanism without the town putting, uh, significantly more forward uh, to secure the construction for it. So there's, there really isn't any operation and maintenance obligation upon the town and the grant work is, uh, been kept to a minimum. So it seems to be a no brainer that the town steps up, needs a project rather than the town private who was originally lined up to do the project who backed out because they focused on the building. So if there's no immediate objection, my intention would be, tell Dean that we're on board with being the project.
This is, uh, hi, this is Christine Gupiel, can you hear me?
Yes.
I just want to say, I, I think it's a phenomenal opportunity, uh, utilized that back there and probably great for educational purposes, seeing that people potentially be stopping at the new development, there can be signage, et cetera, explaining what's going on back there and how it's a resource, so I'd be fully in favor of it.
Thank you. Anybody else, any other comments? Okay, thank you again, everyone, um, and just a reminder, so tonight, six o'clock, if everybody can jump. Yeah.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Dennis.
Oh, I'm sorry, I, I, I just wanted to make a quick comment, I thought you were, this is asking about a comment about the manager's report. Uh, just like to give a brief report on the, uh, latest developments on our roofing projects. I'm very happy to announce that the, uh, on April twenty second, the Department of Administrative Services sent us two letters to the town. Uh, the first letter said that, uh, based on the fact if there's no other, uh, thing, paperwork and all gets sent in and, uh, there's no complications, that they, uh, will approve, uh, our application for a grant. Uh, the first one is for the, uh, Joel School and, uh, let me make sure I got that school lined up there, yes. It's, I'm sorry, the Jared Elliott School. Uh, was, the project cost has come in at four hundred and thirty-six thousand, five hundred and sixty-three dollars. And they are willing to, uh, give us a reimbursement of forty-one point seven-nine percent towards that figure. The second one, towards the Joel, Joel School. Uh, Clinton's projected cost is one million, five hundred eighty-five thousand, nine hundred dollars. Again, they are, uh, have approved that they will give us a forty-one point seven-nine percent reimbursement on that figure. Uh, in talking with our architects, we feel comfortable that, uh, we should be able to get all our, uh, books in order and that, uh, we will, uh, probably be able to go out to bid and get everything tidied up and hopefully, we can start the project in the first week of July. And, uh, we've been told that we can look forward to maybe just a seven to eight week, uh, construction. So that will fall well within the, uh, before the school opening in September, hopefully. So, uh, it's all good news on that front and I just wanted to report that, uh, to the council.
Thank you very much, Dennis. All right, uh, at this point, everybody, six o'clock tonight, if we can jump out about fifteen minutes early for tonight's meeting, at least we can walk through how we're going to handle the public hearing tonight. Um, so that being said, motion to adjourn?
Don't move.
Second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
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 All right, see everybody tonight, thank you, Ken.
Thanks, Mr. Chair.
Thank you.